Well, that clack up there is a little behind.
Always.
Maybe it's a little bit.
I don't know where the password is. How come I don't have it?
Oh, gads. No, I don't.
What's the password?
It's a long one.
No clue.
I'll look it up in a minute. Do you want this?
Okay. I'd like to call this meeting to order. It is a special meeting of the Fairmont City Council. Today is Wednesday, January 31st, 2018. It's 5:30 PM and we are in the City Hall Council Chambers. This is in place of our regular meeting that was scheduled to be held on January 22nd, but it needed to be canceled due to the blizzard. And so, roll call vote. Patty.
Cypher's.
Present.
Hawkins.
Present.
Hassick.
Present.
Peters.
Here.
Zarley.
It's been determined that we have a quorum and we will now do the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. First item on tonight's agenda is to approve the minutes from our regular meeting from January 8th, 2018, and they were in your packet. Is there a motion, please, to approve the minutes as presented?
Moves to approve.
Motion offered by Hassick. Second. Second by Cypher's. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried. Next item is...
Mayor.
Oh, pardon me. Did I forget something?
Approve the agenda.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Patty. Is there a motion to approve our agenda? Let's do that one. There, at your seat, thank you Patty, there was a correction for, we're going to be working on ordinance number 201802, and this is just some wording correction to make it gender neutral. And then, there's also a sheet at your seat that was Paul will use when he gives his presentation on the water rate increase. So, with that, is there, please, a motion to approve the agenda?
So, who?
Motion offered by Hassick. Excuse me, Hawkins.
Close.
Sorry. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Cypher's. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 All opposed. Motion carried. Now, we'll move on. And the next one is 7.1, and it's an open discussion. And Heather Claussen is with us, and she is a candidate for Minnesota House of Representative, 23A. Welcome, Heather.
Thank you very much. It's very nice to be here with you. This is my second time in this council chambers. I was at the Fairmont School District Board meeting a few months ago. So, like you said, my name is Heather Claussen. I'm a candidate for Minnesota House in District 23A, and I promise I'm not here to give you a big speech or anything like that today. One of the commitments that I made, because I'm a first-time candidate, is I decided our district is pretty large geographically. We've got about half of Jackson County, all of Martin County, two-thirds of Fairbowl County, and a little strip into Watinwan, which is where I live. And so, in order to get to know the district a little bit better, I committed to attend at least one, if not more, of every city council, county commissioner, and school board meeting in our district. And just for some perspective, we have about 26 cities, four counties, and about nine school districts that touch this district in some way. So, I'm going to meetings a lot. So, I'm glad this worked out. I was supposed to come last Monday also and it was snowed in at my house. But I'm a native of Jackson. I grew up there, graduated in 1993 from Jackson High School, before they were the Huskies. We were the Blue Jays then. And I went off to college in South Dakota at Augustana and decided to move back to the district to raise my family after I was finished with college. I love this area. I run a small business in Jackson. I'm an insurance agent, and I work specifically with health insurance and Medicare. Also, work on the Minture market, which is one of the reasons that I wanted to get involved with all the uncertainties in healthcare network issues and things like that in our district. But these meetings, again, have been a really nice way for me to kind of get a snapshot of what's going on in the different communities and the different school districts and things like that. You guys are really the front line in your communities of making policies and things like that. So, I respect your time and the efforts that you do. You're also probably the first ones that hear complaints and things like that, too. So, that's why I'm here tonight, just to sit in on your meeting. I've been everywhere between Breslin and Butterfield for council meetings and everywhere in between. So, thank you again. And I've got some business cards and things like that I can hand out after the meeting is over, if anyone would like them. And also, if anyone has any questions, that would be fine, too.
Thanks for being here, Heather.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is 8.1, and it's a proclamation for the Congenital Heart Defect Awareness Week. And I would like to read the proclamation, please. Whereas the health and well-being of children is of paramount importance, and whereas each year in the United States, more than 40,000 babies are born with a congenital heart defect, and whereas the medical community has identified congenital heart defects as the leading cause of heart defect-related deaths, and whereas medical research can provide more identifiable means of origins and symptoms of congenital heart defect, and whereas it is crucial that parents, pediatricians, and all those in the health profession have a greater awareness of the potential for heart, excuse me, for congenital heart defects among newborns and children. Whereas congenital heart defect awareness week provides the opportunity for families and patients affected by these conditions to share their experiences and knowledge with the public so that they may all be made more aware of how this defect affects all of our lives. Now, therefore, I, Deborah J. Foster, do hereby proclaim February 17th through the 14th, 2018, congenital heart defect awareness week. Encourage all to join me in this special observance. And we have someone pretty special that is here with us tonight, and her name is Haley. And Haley would like to come to the podium with her mom, Rachel, and just give a couple comments about congenital heart defect. Come on up, Haley.
Hi, my name is Haley, and I am 10 years old. I was born with a congenital heart defect, or C-H-D. I have two open-heart surgeries so far. C-H-D's are the number-one birth defect. One in 100 babies are born with one. Thank you for taking the time to help me raise awareness about the leading cause of infant deaths in the United States.
Thanks for being with us, Haley. And Haley would like to come up, and she's going to shake each one's hand and pick up her proclamation, and she would like to do that. Come on up, Haley. You can start with those guys.
Thank you for sharing.
Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Next one is 8.2, and this is another proclamation, and I'm going to read this proclamation, but it has already expired because we were going to read it at our meeting, but it went by. So, but I would still like to read it because I think it's a very good one. So, here we go. Whereas all children in the city of Fairmont should have access to the highest quality education possible, and whereas the city of Fairmont recognizes the important role that an effective education plays in preparing all students in the city of Fairmont to be successful adults, and whereas quality education is critically important to the economic vitality of the city of Fairmont, and whereas the city of Fairmont is home to a multitude of high-quality public and non-public schools from which parents can choose for their children, in addition to families who educate their children in the home. And whereas educational variety not only helps to diversify our economy, but also enhances the vibrancy of our community. And whereas the city of Fairmont has many high-quality teaching professionals in all types of school settings who are committed to educating our children. And whereas school choice week is celebrated across the country by millions of students, parents, educators, schools, and organizations to raise awareness of the need for effective educational options. Now, therefore, I, Deborah J. Foster, Mayor of the city of Fairmont, do hereby proclaim January 21st through the 27th, 2018, as city of Fairmont Choice Week.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Next item, 8.3, snow removal presentation, and Troy and Nick Lardy.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Just wanted to talk a little bit about snow. If anyone noticed, we did have some snow last week. We had quite a bit. 16 inches, by what I've heard. It did create for some pretty difficult conditions for businesses and residents, and also for the city crews that were out trying to move and keep the roads clear. Just to kind of recap on that, since we had a relatively recent event, you know, the conditions that came down, again, 16 inches, but it was the way it came down with the heavy snow that did pack down. It required some extra passes through town. A lot of people were dealing with some extra snow on the streets on Tuesday into Wednesday that we did have to go back and do additional passes through town to get that snow cleared off and as well to scrape the streets to get that packed snow off of there. So, it was quite an event. I don't know that, there hasn't been one like that since I've been here, and some of the guys have said it's been many years since they remember that amount of snow coming down. So, overall, I think the city crews did a great job with the conditions that were presented to them and the equipment and the staff that we have, talking with other peers around the state. I think our crews did an excellent job of getting the streets clear. And Mother Nature helped us a little bit on Wednesday and Thursday with some melting to get the roads back to smooth surfaces. So, to follow up on that, we're going to talk a little bit about our snow and ice control policy. We've had one in place for many years. There's been iterations of it that have been developed over time. We have it currently online. We're in the process of updating that with some of the new staff, new employees, and new equipment that we've used over time. This presentation kind of summarizes our snow and ice control policy, just to kind of talk about what we do, the process that we use, what equipment and areas that we do snow removal in. And then, we'll touch a little bit on the back end about some specific issues with snow in driveways and some of the other things that people can do to help everyone in the snow removal process. So, we'll move into, first slide I have here is just the areas of removal. The city has about 75 miles of street that we remove snow on. Several miles of gravel roads and alleys, the public parking lots, as well as the city park lots. And we continue to add more sidewalks and trails that the city also does do snow removal on. The city does contract for the airport. We do have a subcontractor that assists with the snow removal on the airport specifically. But otherwise, everything above that is what the city crews take care of. And just to kind of put in perspective, 75 miles sounds like a lot, but generally speaking, each street requires four passes of that 75 miles. So, you can kind of take that number by times four to start looking at lane miles and the amount of distance that the plow trucks are working and the graders are working to clear those roads. We do this process basically with, under full staff conditions, we'd have 19 employees that are working on it. We combine the streets and parks groups together to work with the list of equipment that we show there to try and tackle each of these areas. The guys do the best they can with this equipment that we have. We've been better at upgrading the equipment in the last few years, thanks to the council approving some budgets. We've been able to get some new plow trucks over that time and a couple new full-size trucks, as well as some of the smaller loaders that help with the sidewalks and trails. You'll see there, with this event specifically, we're 19 at full staff, but we were actually at 16 with a couple guys that are out injured and we're in the process of hiring that last person that was approved as part of the 2018 budget. So, we were a little shorthanded in this event, but the guys did what they could with what they have, you know, to flashback to the 16 inches of snow. Generally speaking, the city's, we're not staffed or equipped to remove 16 inches of snow in a short time. It's just, I think there was a lot of concerns that things weren't happening quickly enough. To maximize or be efficient with our resources, we can't staff for 16 inches of snow, and we can't buy the equipment to handle 16 inches of snow. The guys did a great job of using what they have. But because we have what we have, we've developed a process. And this process, this is just a brief summary of what's listed in the snow and ice control policy that we have online. This talks through the phases that we address. Each snowfall is different. You know, we never know when the snow is going to come down, when the crews are going to get called in. Nick goes out, I don't know how many mornings, a winter, driving around to see when and where to call the guys in. Do you call the whole crew in? Do you call in two or three guys to put sand and salt down because we had some rain? Or we had some snow melting or wind blowing overnight where we got a clear drifts? Every event is different, so we try and define a general process of, here's kind of the first, second, third, fourth, fifth steps that we take in a snow removal event. Normal conditions, this process takes six to eight hours to get the roads clear and maybe two to three days, maybe, you know, 24 hours worth of work to get all the snow removed from downtown, all the cul-de-sacs and everything hauled. This last event, the guys had over 60 hours just last week to get to where they are now, and we're still hauling snow this week to get everything cleaned up. So, they've been putting in a lot of time to address this event and have followed this process. I'm not necessarily going to read each of these, but just in a general perspective, the first place that most of the equipment goes, or a lot of the equipment goes, is to Downtown Plaza. They move to downtown, clear the snow, and put the windrows in the streets in the downtown. The plow trucks go out on their routes, and they'll hit emergency routes and priority routes. And we'll move into the Jeeps. Smaller units will go and start working on the city parks and the sidewalks and trails. The graders move from downtown out to their routes, and then plow trucks are continuing into the smaller, or the residential neighborhoods.
Troy?
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Can you explain what priority routes and emergency routes are?
Yes, on the next slide I will.
Okay.
No, and that's, well, and, yes, we'll discuss that. I have a little bit more information on emergency and priority routes and some ways people can get at that information. So, then, we hit those routes first, follow up with some problem areas. Plow trucks move. They need to go, plow trucks need to follow the graders to get sand and salt because graders can't drop sand and salt. They'll move into the cul-de-sacs and start clearing those out. Then, they move into the alleys, continue blowing out downtown, and then they'll start to do some of the cleanup, hauling the snow out of the cul-de-sacs. They're currently hauling snow out of cul-de-sacs and working on intersections and problem areas with catch basins where we know that there's, if we have melt coming like today, where there's any issues, that catch basins can get plugged up. So, we start to work on those the days following the events to try and work and get everything clear and ready for the next event. So, any questions on the process? I know I ran through that quickly. There's more information online, but that's a general summary of the process. Nick?
You hit it pretty well there, Troy, yep.
Just for clarification, you say we start downtown, but plow trucks go out simultaneously to the neighborhoods, correct?
Yep. Yes, there's five dump trucks slash plow trucks, and they go out right away. So, they're hitting the emergency routes, the through streets. The two graders, two loaders, three Jeeps, they're all downtown getting Plaza sidewalks cleaned off and windrowing the rest of the downtown area. And you have to do that with a motor grader. It's just too much snow to push up.
So, this next slide talks a little bit about some of the statutes and code, just reminders for people. We do have a snow emergency parking restrictions. Basically, our city code states that after two inches or more of snowfall, a snow emergency is automatically declared. There's no parking on snow emergency routes. You can vaguely see this map. It kind of shows those routes. I'll show you a little better one here in a minute. But the emergency routes are what we've identified as those main routes to and from hospitals, elder care facilities, and then just the main through roads that have the higher volume of traffic within the city. Priority routes are basically that second tier of road that has some higher traffic. And that's how we've defined those two routes, really based on traffic use and whatever businesses or facilities might be located on those roads. So, during a snow emergency, vehicles are supposed to not be on the street for 24 hours, or they should, they can be parked in the same place for 24 hours during a snow emergency. And then, downtown has parking restrictions through the winter, overnights, and then during snow emergency as well as not to be parked on until it's cleared from curb to curb. Another thing I'm noticing this year is the sidewalk requirements. Any snow and ice needs to be removed within 24 hours for properties that have sidewalk abutting their property. That's something we're kind of paying attention to this year. I think there's, people might need some reminders on that, that it is their responsibility to clear the sidewalks within 24 hours. And the last one is just private property, snow removal, that it's unlawful to deposit snow or ice in the street. We ask that you put it in the boulevard or put it in your front yard. Don't blow it back out in the street. Don't push into the street. Don't push across the street. Try and keep the snow within the constraints of your property and to not impact our snow removal process or impact the driving public if there's extra piles that we got to drive around or piles that are left in the street that people will drive through. So, those are some of the reminders, I guess, of the existing code and statutes that are in place. We'll talk a little bit more here just to discuss, you know, some of the things that, what can residents do to help in this process? Number one is just look at the snow and ice control policy to understand it, to have, define what their expectations are. You can go on there. I'll show you in a minute. We're working on getting our GIS maps up so people can click on them and find out what truck, what plow route they're on, if they're on an emergency route, if they're on a priority route. You can see that. Another big comment that comes up and is a challenge, I met with all the streets and parks employees yesterday to kind of discuss this latest snow event. We talked for at least an hour on things that, you know, things that they think we can do better, things we should be looking at to do differently. And one of the biggest ones is trying to get the vehicles off the street. If people have the opportunity to put their vehicles in the driveway or somewhere else, it just makes the process so much smoother. It makes the road surface that much better. We don't have to come back and try and clean it up, or in the situation that happened this last week, things refroze, and now you got big hard ice chunks in those areas where vehicles were parked. So, we ask that you do what you can to get your vehicles off the street. If you do need to park on the street, consider, you know, staggering. Don't park directly across the street from another car. Gives the plow trucks room to get through. If they're parked together, it just narrows up the street that much more and makes it more of a challenge to get through. The other big comment that came out of our discussion yesterday was garbage cans and recycling bins. Everyone's putting their garbage cans and recycling bins down at the end of the snowbank or into the street. or into the street so the garbage truck can pull up nice and dump everything, but we had to drive around those two days in a row because garbage got canceled on Monday. So we drove around them in a couple neighborhoods twice, and it's just another thing where you have to slow up your momentum so you're not knocking garbage cans over and going around. And so, you know, if, if people can see that a snowplow event is coming, we'd ask that they try and keep the garbage cans back a little bit so they're not out into the street. And then the last two, just reiterate the, the code and the statute that are out there of not blowing your snow or into the streets, and same thing with keeping our sidewalks clear. So, what I have here, so we've been working on GIS for the last couple of years, trying to get all of our information up on GIS, and we have, we're gonna put this link or something similar to this, which didn't work, up on the screen. It looks really nice on my computer.
I bet.
Let me see, I'll change. So, there's, we're gonna set this link up so people can go on here, and there's a couple of different layers that, that you can turn, and you can turn on, you can see where the downtown haul-out areas are where we pile snow, you can see the individual plow routes, just identified these maps, will also be in our snow removal policy, but we're hoping to get this link on the website so people can, can jump on their computer, then they can kind of zoom in and see what they, what street they live on, if it's emergency route or priority, and you can turn the layers on and see the aerial. So we're gonna get that link up so people can kind of identify these emergency routes and so they're aware that they, they need to get their vehicles moved off to the, off of those routes, and they can also review and provide input if they think we have, if there's a priority route that we're missing, that someone feels really needs to get more attention, certainly open to input from that perspective, so. So then, you know, the last thing to touch on is kind of maybe some of the initial discussion or initial concerns that prompted some of this was driveways and depositing snow in, in residents' driveways and residents' responsibility to clean the snow out of the driveways. We did evaluate, or I shouldn't say evaluate, we looked at some options many years ago, haven't got an exact date, the city had some arms that would help to remove snow in front of people's driveways. They still make a similar product, we haven't done it for at least twenty to twenty-five years from everything I'm hearing. They do make a similar product, that's, they're called snow gates that mount on graders. They're set up to drop down, helps reduce the amount of snow that goes into driveways and then you lift them up as you go by. The models that we were looking at are only work on road graders, and I listed a couple of things here, pros and cons, is they do reduce the amount of snow in driveways potentially, but they are a pretty significant initial capital investment. If you recall, we have two road graders, and neither of them are all-wheel drive, so to do this right, you'd need at least seven new road graders plus the snow gates. So there's a high initial capital investment, using the road grader slows the process down, it actually adds another layer, because as I said before, the plow trucks that sand, have to come back and sand and salt behind the road graders because they can't do that, and then the, the limited capacity. We did go out, City of Sioux Falls does use these, it's the one that we found in the area that does, and they have quite a fleet of graders to do it, but they have a lot of information online. They talk about relatively limited capacity with those snow gates, anything over seven inches of snow, they really aren't effective because the snow just piles over. So they, you know, they're, they're, they're nice, but I think they really have a pretty limited, limited use in, in the big picture of things. And then we also did, Mike sent on a survey, just asking other cities if anyone uses it, and I think we had twenty-four, twenty-five responses that there weren't people doing driveway removals. And I did some other research and found several codes or other snow removal policies that didn't do that, but a lot of them reference this image that I have here that Minda puts on their website for people to consider, to try and help reduce the amount of snow that ends up in your driveway, and basically it's just clearing a pocket of snow upstream from your driveway so that snow is dumped on the boulevard before it gets to your driveway. We will be getting all this information up, we have our, our old
Yeah.
... snow and ice control policy on the website, and we're, we're in the process of updating that. I'll put this PowerPoint presentation up there tomorrow as well so people can take a look, review that, we'll also get that link up there so people can look at those routes through the GIS, and people can certainly let me know if they have questions or comments on, on our process, and if there's areas they think we should look a little more closely at or reconsider the way we do it. So, with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you.
I, maybe I'm mistaken, I thought we had a twenty-four hour parking limit year round.
That, that's correct, your, your car has to be moved every twenty-four hours throughout the year.
Okay, so you mentioned snow emergency, I think that's just staying, I realize it's more important, but I just thought that was a-
Well, once the snow emergency goes into effect, you have to move your car, and it has to be moved that entire twenty-four hours off the street or until it's plowed curb to curb on a snow emergency route.
On a snow emergency route. Otherwise, I think the snow emergency-
Gotcha.
-could just trigger getting your car towed sooner, otherwise it would just get a ticket if it was parked.
I've had a number of suggestions, I'm sending this more to Nick, about doing a snow emergency where we do the whole town parking either one side or the other for one day, you know, and I'm assuming that would make plowing a heck of a lot more efficient.
Anything would help.
If we would do that.
It would, yeah.
And I, I have, I've had a number of people suggest that we just, when we do a snow emergency, we do it like the Twin Cities and even odd, north, southeast, you know, whatever.
Right, right. I've thought about the, you know, even odd thing, then you're gonna add two days of plowing for sure, you know, because you can only do half the street.
Right.
So, I mean, if we want, if everybody wants us to get out there, get the streets cleaned as quickly and as efficiently as possible, get the cars off the street, both sides. And I know that's not possible in some places, but it would help us out immensely, especially with this last snow.
Well, and this obviously isn't gonna happen again for, odds are for another five years or ten.
Hopefully longer.
Or longer, but, I mean, this is an event, like you said, hasn't, it doesn't happen.
Right.
I got, I got one other comment.
Thank you.
Troy mentioned that there was two guys out on medical, we were full staffed with all of our equipment, we pulled our building maintenance guy out, and, who's the other I know Troy, we have, our mechanic was plowing, so, we had, we had all of our equipment out and going, so, we were not down two pieces of equipment.
Right.
So, you are not that enthused about doing a citywide snow emergency sort of thing? Is that kind of the answer I got?
I, yeah, yeah, I am.
Oh, you are?
Yeah, definitely.
You just don't wanna do an odd even to me?
I, the odd even one, I'd have to look into a little more, you know, I'm just saying-
Well, what else, what else would we do? Some people, I mean, there's people that don't have off-street parking.
My dad, my dad lives in Buffalo, Minnesota, and I think from November first to April first, you don't park overnight on the street. It don't matter if there's snow or anything on the road.
I don't think we can do that, there's spots-
So, I'm saying that's an extreme, but-
We've got people that don't have off-street parking.
We should look into something, I mean, some, something would help.
I think one of the things the pub, general public can do, we have a lot of shared driveways, we have a lot of single driveways, you just have to park tandem and be inconvenienced, you might have to, okay, who's gonna leave for work first? But I think there's some of that, just so you, two people don't have to get up and shuffle cars, but it's better than spending an hour and a half shoveling your, the snow away from your car left by a road grader or a snowplow.
Well, I hate to be a realist, but I am. If we don't dictate it via ordinance, it's not gonna happen. I'm sorry, that's just, I think that's reality.
Right.
And, sorry, Rudy.
And really, you know, you get a three-inch snow, it's not a really big deal, you know, it's, it's just when you get these doozies like this, and, you know, you gotta keep in mind, I'm taking a road grader for example, he's chugging along, he's gotta keep up his momentum to keep that snow coming off the plow. If he's gotta slow down, and with this wet, heavy snow we had this time, as soon as he slows down, he's spinning, he's stopped. And you can't, it's hard to steer that equipment when, as soon as you hit that snow, it packs into ice, so, it was very difficult for all the operators this last snow, I know that.
So, on the, in the, so that, to just be clear, the twenty-four hour no parking, that's just in the emergency, right? That's just in the emergency route?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Tell it's clear curb to curb.
So, where does Armstrong Drive fall in your plan of attack?
Um-
Out there at Waytronics?
Usually Rick, Rick gets at, he gets Blue Earth Avenue first, as soon as he gets some of the main res, the through Forest Street, Blue Earth Avenue, of course, as soon as he gets the main streets done in the, in the city residential area, downtown area, then he heads out Lake Avenue out to the industrial park.
So, and so then, wh- when you talk about time, maybe we can talk a little bit about time, what does, when does this happen and how do you decide?
Good question. Um, as far as time, it just depends on the conditions. As soon as, he's been doing this route for years and years and years, and it's kind of always been this way.
I'm speaking to all of your, how do you, when, how do you send them out? When do you send them out?
Oh, a typical, a typical snow event, let's say Saturday night, they're talking snow, so I'm like, okay, Saturday or Sunday morning, I guess it would be, I'd get up at midnight. I get up, I look out the window, did it snow yet? Nope, go back to bed, get up at one-thirty, look out, okay, we got some snow coming, I'll go downstairs, check the radar, if it looks like it's gonna be a doozy, I jump into pickup and take a spin. Check all the problem areas, it depends on what way the wind's blowing, if wind is an issue, direction is huge, and what they're forecasting, you know, if they're forecasting one inch, then I'm like, okay, we'll probably get by with maybe just a sanding event. If they're forecasting four or five inches and radar looks like it's coming, I will make a call, usually three, four o'clock in the morning, and get everybody out of bed and get them coming in.
So, in this last event that we had-
Yep.
-it snowed-
Yep.
-all day Monday?
Yeah, it started like three AM, somewhere around there.
All day Monday?
Yep.
And so when did they go out then, that next morning?
Uh, three AM, Tuesday morning.
Typical, that's typical and something like that?
Uh, well, they came in at five AM on Monday morning. We worked from, some of them worked till six, seven, and eight-thirty that night. So, they need to get some sleep and get ready for the next day because they got a huge day of removing some snow. So, that was kind of an, my call, I said they need some supper, get some sleep, come in at three o'clock in the morning, we're gonna hit it hard, so.
Okay, I do have another question regards to budget, because I don't know, what kind of a budget do we have for snow removal? And do we hit our budget every year? And is it possible to go out and get some other snow removal help in an event like this, or, just, just ask.
I don't know, I don't have a number right off the top of my head, but it's one of those numbers that we, what is our operating cost, and, and we look at that year and plug in some additional just for cost of gasoline and that sort of thing, but it's, we don't have money set aside where we could hire private, I think we would have to look at the budget to add that. Nick, you know, we know what, about how much salt and sand we need to go through, that we'll need for every year, that stays pretty constant. It's generally the, the number of events, we, you know, we, we try to plan for what our normal snow year is in that, in the, in terms of that budget, and it just becomes part of the overall street's budget, and so, we-
So you don't have a separate like line item for snow removal, or you think it's-
There is a ice and snow account, forty-three, one-twenty-five.
Yeah.
There's a snow and ice control account, and I don't know exactly how that's split up amongst the street, but I know that handles this, this sand and salt and-
Right.
And then some of the guys up, time, a percentage of their time, and it's really based on historical, what we've done the last three years to try and anticipate what the weather's gonna do for us, it varies each year, but generally speaking.
No, I think-
I think we hit it pretty close.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I think this time, our streets were a little more ready, but I think that probably had to do with the temperature and then getting below, I mean, the, the snow was very heavy-
Right.
And then kind of froze, and it was kind of the worst of all scenarios, I think.
Yeah, we kinda had an interesting deal happen that I really haven't experienced before, is this stuff was so wet and heavy, as soon as people drove over it, it packed into ice.
Mm-huh.
And if you can imagine the wheel, the wheel ruts going down the road, so now you got your road surface, your, where your tires are, and then the center. So, we would plow and all we could touch with our pick, with our truck plows, and even our blades, because it was so hard, is the top of that where the cars were driving. So we would plow the street and you'd have a pickup behind you and he'd be driving off them wheel ruts, and that snow would be flying up because we can't touch it, and it almost looks like we didn't even do anything to the street. It was tough, everybody, I know, I've heard a couple other towns were dealing with the same issue, so, and we had to wait until that stuff started loosening up, so our plows were able to start cutting that packed down ice-
So you have to make more paths too, or more-
Correct.
-over the same area?
Yep, that's correct.
So maybe somebody that is driveway gets clogged while you gotta go back over there and do it again.
Yes, and we did that quite a bit.
And clogging them up again.
Unfortunately, I mean, there's, we have to put that snow somewhere.
Oh, mine got filled up four times.
Four times, I took care of my buddy's place while he was up nor, north snowmobiling, and I did his windrow four times on Woodland Avenue.
Hey, it's Minnesota.
Exactly.
It's just the way it is.
It's just the way it is.
I think from a technical standpoint, when you talked about, you know, the plows down and-
Yep.
-just hitting the tops, maybe explain a little bit about the lack of down pressure on your front, front plow versus-
Yep.
-just how that works, because people say, well, tell them to put their plows down all the way.
Okay, you guys have all seen our dump truck plow trucks, the big green trucks, we got a plow in the front, and there's a belly blade that's in between the front and rear axle. The plow in the front is just gravity, there is no down pressure, so it's the weight of the plow only that's cutting. The belly blade plow is hydraulically lowered, but it's a pretty low pressure, and the angle of attack of the cutting edge, the, the belly blade flips up like this and just goes down like this. So you can't get that thing way down to get a good angle of attack on that cutting edge to peel up the ice. And also, there's horsepower issues, when you're doing that much work, you need a lot of horsepower, a lot of attractive effort. The road graders, they have down pressure, they can lift their rear wheels right off the ground, but then you don't have your attractive effort. So when we're doing some heavy-duty scraping, which we did, we need our two blades to be out, and then they have to hit all the main drags through town, and that takes time. And also, the conditions have to be right for them guys to make that pass worthwhile. We can go out there and run through there all day long, you know, and remove a half inch. We wanna go out and remove it all the way down to the pavement. If the traffic breaks it up and it's safe to get through the street, then we can, actually the traffic will loosen it up nice, so then the blades can come through and get some good cutting pressure, cutting action, and kick that snow out. There again, it goes right to the end of the driveways, unfortunately.
I'd like to compliment you guys, I think you did-
Thank you.
-as good a job as-
It was a battle, I'm telling you, I mean, it was the worst one I've been through, so, I mean, there's, we're learning too. We had, I know one route we had some troubles with, we've been working on cleaning that up. The guys aren't perfect, you know what? They hit mailboxes, we ding a car, we don't try to do that. We do not try to put snow in people's driveway on purpose. These guys are struggling to get their machine down the road, and that's just, you know, they, they're not trying to put the snow there, it needs to go somewhere.
I'm pretty comfortable in saying that, I'm sure much of the criticism comes from somebody who's never- I'm pretty comfortable in saying that, I'm sure much of the criticism comes from somebody who's never run a piece of heavy equipment in their life.
Yep.
Think it's like driving a car.
Right. I've, I've worked on road graders a lot, I've never driven one, I can, I kinda know what they do, I'd love to drive one. But it's, um, and I see what they're capable of doing, and, and their limitations, just like any piece of equipment the city owns.
Exactly.
So, I still would like to, if, if there is some thought about changing our snow emergency or procedures via ordinance, you guys kick it around a little bit, and see if you can come up with an idea, cause I think we would be, at least willing to discuss it.
Yeah, you bet.
Well, even that being said, I, there, you know, I, you know, I appreciate it, too, but, that being said, and all of this, there's still a lot of frustration out there.
Oh, definitely.
And, and, and even when there isn't a big event, I think there's still some frustration out there. Um, and so, what, how, um, and I haven't, you know, I've got a file here, but I, I was waiting for tonight, cause I don't know a lot about this, and, so, um, is there, at, what is the plan, how do we receive complaints about him, and to get them where they belong, and, um, and so that there can be some action on him, or some, you know, response to the community about this?
I was, I was gonna comment on your question about Armstrong Drive in particular, but, events like this help us, under, in extreme cases, identify some of our weaknesses, or some of the things we need to, to change. Um, I took several calls, um, I'm, we have, every, everybody in City Hall that's answering the phone is taking calls. We keep track of that, as Nick said earlier, when he gets up in the morning, he goes to pr- known problem areas, and we'll, and we look at those, and sometimes we don't learn about newer problem areas, or, until we have an event like this that helps us reevaluate. Um, I think certainly, we can, as Armstrong Drive, you know, it's usually about, you know, on average, nine o'clock before you get out there, and that might not be a big deal when there's three or four inches, but when there's sixteen, it, it, it did cause some issues. So, you know, we can rea- reevaluate that, and look at timing of, timing of different areas, but it always goes back to, when Nick said he started at Blue Earth Avenue, which goes into Lake Avenue, clearing, uh, Fourth Street, Park, Prairie, we've gotta be able to get people from where they live, out to the industrial park. So, it's, sometimes it's a chicken and egg thing, but we certainly use events like this to, evaluate our process, and are we doing it right? Is there a particular area of the community that has some additional, concerns that we, that we need to address? Knollwood, Patriot, and North Knollwood, for example, depending on the wind, that can be one of the worst spots in town, if the wind blows from a different direction, i- it's different, so, some of our streets down where you live, where they're, they're narrow, or in more cars parking, you know, across from one another, like Nick's, or Troy said, if we stagger them, you know, maybe that's some information we can put out, but I encourage people to, continue to call, to talk about, um, different scenarios that they're seeing, that, that we, we might have missed, or we could at least tell them, well, we're, we're aware of that, and we're working on that concern. Nick, is there any of our streets that we have directional plows on that dictate?
Directional?
Snow plows, or that?
Like a, like a one-way plow?
Right.
Uh, nope, all of our plows are reversible now. We do have kind of a spare truck that has a one-way plow, so. And one, one other thing to keep in mind, not to interrupt, but, um, the council did approve another person, for the Sid, for the street department, um, we are, a, a park guy bid on that job, so it left a park position open, so, but we do have another position that is open right now, and I know, me and Troy have discussed, we're, some of these problem areas, like the industrial park, I agree, that thing should be opened up as soon as possible.
They're going to work pretty early out there.
Right, yep. So, I mean, this is something we can talk and make up a new plan, maybe this new guy can go out and hit some of these problem areas right away, you know, um, and, and these routes didn't, I didn't just sit down and make these routes up. You know, it's, a lot of them, we do this because of this, because we've had problems throughout, you know, however, however many years back. So, that's kinda how this all evolved, and I'm open to suggestions. Anybody can call me anytime, I'd be more than happy to talk to anybody, I'll meet you out at your house, or your business, or whatever, and walk through why we do it this way, and I'm open to that, anytime.
I think that's what our, you know, all of our constituents needs to know that.
Yeah.
You know, that we're open.
Yeah, for sure.
You know, if we need to make some changes, we can do that.
Yep. I know Tuesday would've been tough to meet somebody out, you know, but.
And we can't make changes, staff can make the changes, but we can't make the changes, that's not our responsibility to do, as a city council and a mayor.
Yep.
Um, but staff is, certainly has that, recommendate, I mean, has that authority to do that, and that's your responsibility.
Now, private sidewalks, um, do we ever clean private sidewalks and send them the bill?
Well, if it.
Not that I know of, I guess.
We don't, we, we, we have set, have commercial people clean and then assess, just like we would a lawn mowing. If it's, it, but it's, it's gotta be pretty extreme.
Okay.
But we won't go clean, uh, or, the city crews will not clean up.
Who's in charge of looking over that, then?
Well, that's, um, Megan Bok's job primarily, she'll, generally, that's on a, uh, kind of a complaint basis, but this year, as Troy said, we've got a lot more sidewalks along State Street with the reconstruction, that we're paying attention to, a lot more people out walking, the, you know, school routes, we're, we're paying more attention as a, as a whole, as, you know, law enforcement and, and others, to make sure we're getting our sidewalks cleaned up.
Okay, hey, go ahead.
Um, thanks, and I, yeah, I, I do wanna, uh, commend the city stuff, I, I have concerns about our plan. Uh, I didn't have concerns until, you know, I got on City Council and heard it from people. Um, I don't know if what we're doing is, well, I think what the city did was exemplary. I just think we maybe need, at least to consider options, that might include outside help in extreme circumstances. Uh, going back to the industrial park, I did do some research, cause I was getting complaints about the industrial park area before this last snowfall, so I'd already, done some research, I talked to some of the people out there, and, uh, you know, I, I, and I've talked to other communities, similar-sized communities, and pretty much everyone I happened to talk to, happened to have on their priority to have any area of town that had, shift workers, larger company of shift workers, be at, done by six o'clock. And so, uh, and then the little discussion I talked with Mike, you made it sound like it might be easy to do that, for that, you know, with, uh, with one guy who, uh, heads out there, I think that's something we need to make a priority, that.
Yeah.
Anyplace, you know, three AM is not a problem, cause they're right on the,
Right.
Right on the road, but, but for that area, we need to try to figure out when you have shift workers, cause I know that, uh, in one of the last snowstorms, I know, I, I talked to somebody at Handcor, and that's what the rea- that's partly the reason it took a two-hour close, you know, two-hour late for their workers, is because, you know, they knew the snowplow wasn't gonna get there till after nine o'clock. So, I think that's something that we need to at least consider, see if there's a way to make it a
Right.
Priority to go.
I'm, I'm definitely open to that, and just to say, the five years I've been doing this job, I've never received one complaint from out there, so.
No, I, I understand, it took something like this to do that.
Open to that, yeah, for sure.
So, I think, and the other thing is, uh, and I mentioned this to Mike on the phone the other day, but, when, uh, went to Bureau fourteen, and surprisingly, Ruth wasn't there, and Bruce wasn't there, and the mayor wasn't there, and Mike wasn't there.
I was at a Region Nine meeting in Mankato.
All of you, but anyway, so after Lindsay made some remarks, I got up and just talked a little bit about, you know, my first year in there, and I did bring up the fact, cause we had gotten, we all, I think we all got the letter from the one constituent about that one snowfall, who, on the timing. So, I just brought up the fact that's, you know, I said, I don't, I've never, it wasn't ever on my radar, cause I never had any complaints when I was living on King's Road about, the timing of snow removal, but I said, uh, but I said, that did come up, and, and so that's something maybe in the future, we might take a look at. I kinda, just kinda couched it that way, and as I'm sitting there, about four tables, or a bunch of people were nodding their heads, and, you know, and I've heard since then, so I think there's more of an issue about, this, how community, the community feels about snow removal than we know, cause like you say, they don't say anything. They, they complain to me, or they'll get frustrated, and a few of them will write a letter, like the guy we all got a letter from, after that first snowfall, so I, my thinking is that we should, I think we should have a meeting or some kind of a, public forum where we can let people come in and talk about these things, and just hear from them, you know, we may learn something, just kinda like we learned with, the Armstrong, uh, or the, the industrial park thing, that there's people out there that, in a public setting, will come and they'll say, share, their things about it, but this, this town, right or wrong, I don't know whose fault it is, but they're extremely upset. And, uh, and I heard a lot of it, and I, I did a post about, you know, suggestions for avoiding windrows, you know, s- it was a little different, but similar to what Troy put up there. And, you know, since, uh, you have to pay on Facebook, I paid my own money to get that sh- out there, so people can see it, and I get tons of comments, mostly negative, of course, you have some that get on and praise the city rightly for doing a good job, but, you know, it's okay, we want, we want complainers to, to hear, we sometimes learn something. And I just think this is a big enough issue that, um, that we should at least have a meeting, talk about it, look at some options, I think the Sentinel and their editorial, uh, did a pretty decent job of saying, let's look at some options for these extreme cases. You know, it's, uh, two, two different people, the one person on North Park, who for three or four days could not have anybody park in front of their business, because, the pile in the middle of the street was so big, y- you couldn't park on the street in the normal parking spot without blocking traffic.
Right, yep.
They're very frustrated, and they, and that person said, I remember Beamers coming out here and hauling this, I, and, and I've had other people tell me that they've, had, know that private, they think private contractors have helped this, and I think that we should at least look at, look at the budget, see how much it's gonna cost, let the taxpayers who we represent decide, are they willing to have in the budget extra costs for these extreme cases, uh, to get help, to like, move the piles off Main Street, you know, and, uh, I, I think, the, the biggest thing, though, is, is here, let, let people hear, or let people share their frustrations.
Yep.
And I think we can all learn something, and I think, yeah, you just said that a little bit ago, that you said you'd be glad to hear from people, I think,
Right.
We should provide a forum, rather than have everybody just call you, cause they don't wanna call you and bug you. But they'd come to a public meeting, and they'd, they'd, you know, they'd listen to, they, you know, Troy would share kinda what he shared here, and, and let people just ask questions, and you guys, and we may come down and do absolutely nothing different, it might be that. But we might, we might stumble onto an idea that'll work, and it'll give people a chance to share their feelings, and I, so I, I'd recommend doing that, I think we should, you know, I, in fact, unless the rest of you object, I think we should set up a plan to do that, so people can communicate with you and share their feelings, and, and, uh, I think, I think we owe it to our constituents to do that, cause there's a lot of frustration, and even before this last snow event, there were a lot of, I, I was kinda surprised at that, as I was kinda saying, I don't think it's an issue, but there, I've heard from a few others, and I saw two or three tables of people going like this, you know? You know, so, people got feelings, whether they're right or wrong, there may be nothing different we can do, but we should hear from them, so that's just my suggestion, if we can figure out time to do that.
I'm, I'm available, so.
Can I ha- can I just make a couple comments? Um, first of all, I, on that Monday of the storm, I called Mike, and I said, could I please ride with one of the snowplow drivers? I've never been in a snowplow, I have no idea what goes on. And so, Mike said, yeah, I could do that, so, it was, it was a, it was the best experience that I'd ever have, and I'd just like to share a little bit, about my time that I had, because I got to spend some time with Nick first, and he took me, he has a city pickup, that is a four-wheel-drive pickup, but he never puts it in four-wheel drive, he keeps it in two-wheel drive, so he can understand, the road conditions for people that just have average cars, and it's not these big four-wheel-drive cars, because they can get through most things, but not a two-wheel drive, so I appreciate that very much, Nick, for you take, doing that. Um, also, Nick, I, Nick took me around to places that he watches during his route, that starts much earlier than most people ever have an understanding, and again, Nick, thank you for your leadership on that. But one thing I said to Nick when we were in the car, I said, Nick, when you have snowfalls, whether they're three-inch snowfalls, sixteen-snowfalls, at this time, we didn't know it was gonna be a sixteen-inch snowfall, I said, do you evaluate what you do? Do you sit down after the snowfall, talk to your employees and say, what did we do, what worked, what didn't work, and Nick told me, he said, Mayor, we do that every time. And so, I appreciated that coming from Nick, and so, Nick took me around first, and then I got to ride with Rick Pierce. And Rick Pierce, if, and I hope I have the years right, but he told me that he's like thirty-three years he's been a city employee, seventeen of those years he's been a snowplow driver, and he had his, he had his routes that he does, and he took me on that, he took me on his routes, and during the time, I was with him for an hour and a half, and during that hour and a half, he got hung up five times in that, in that snow, and it was simply because he had to slow down for cars, that were parked in the street, and trying to remo- trying to maneuver that huge truck around those cars, getting close enough, not getting too close, putting the sand down, doing this, doing that, it, it was a great experience, and I thank you for that, and thanks, Mike, for allowing me to do that, it gave me a whole different appreciation for what our snowplow drivers do. Um, second of all, is, is the editorial that was in the Sentinel, is, I thought it was very well-written, too, but there was, information in there that wasn't correct, and so, I called Gary and Lee, and I said, could I just please come in and visit with you about some of the information, because, in their editorial, they had stated that the snowplows hadn't gone out till Tuesday, and that was absolutely not true, that was, the snowplows were out, I believe you told me, at five-thirty Monday morning.
Correct.
And I believe I saw the grader go plas- grader go, go past my house at eight-thirty that night, and they had been working all the time. One thing I said to Rick, when do you take lunch? And he said, we take it whenever we get a chance. And, your snowplow drivers, and the, and the effort that they gave to this snowfall, I thought was exceptional. I thought people had way too high of expectations, they had the same expectations of a sixteen-inch snowfall, than they have a two, of a two- or three-inch snowfall, and that expectation was never gonna be met.
Right.
By anybody, no matter how much money was in that budget, that was not gonna be met. Um, second of all, is, um, when people, if people are really angry, in, as far as I'm concerned, if people are really angry, they need to look around this table, because there was not one person, including myself, when we did the two thousand eighteen budget, that said to Mike, Andrew Troy, we gotta increase that budget, because people aren't happy, and we need to, and we need to put more people into it, and we need more put. Not one time did any of us on, on, around this table say that to city staff. And so, um, if people wanna really put some blame, then they can look at this table, and we are to blame, cause we, they did the best they could with the resources that they had.
That's correct.
With all that being said, I would agree with Councilor Hawkins, I would agree that we need to have a public hearing. And, but I do need to say, not only the people that have a gripe with the way that we do things, I, people to come with constructive criticism, that doesn't only benefit them, that do my street first, because I gotta go there, or I gotta go here, but also people that really appreciate the service that they have been given, because I think that there are a lot of people out there that do greatly appreciate. I did hear for some people, um, whether it was email or phone calls, and their, their main purpose was just frustration. The amount of snow that had, and it wasn't getting done fast enough, and I just, I just reiterated to people, they're doing the best they can with the resources that they have. And so, with that being said, thank you very much, Nick, for your leadership. Thank you to the plow drivers that gave us everything that they had, and Rick did also remind me, he said, Mayor, remember, that when we get done plowing, we still gotta go home and do our own, there isn't anybody that does our driveway, and does our sidewalks, and does our, and, and so, he really, I, I was very impressed with Rick, and thanks, Rick, for taking me with you. And so, um, thank you for, um, the opportunity, and, and thanks
Thank you, appreciate it.
For your leadership, Nick.
I guess I would, for Nick and Troy, I would invite all of you to get ahold of me, in a snow event, and we can find a truck for you to ride in, and so, I think it's one thing to experience, especially from a side angle, what they see, what they don't see, and, and some of the challenges, and get a little better perspective for it, so.
Yeah, and, and let me just say, though, in response to that, what Deb said, I, I don't disagree, I think it'd be a good idea, I, my feeling was that, I don't think anybody was feeling that any employee didn't know what they're doing, or weren't doing, I think it's just a matter of, it's, it's an operational thing, of how we doing this, when we doing this, what kinda extra resources are there, and these kinda things. I don't think anybody would, would dispute anything that you learned, and I think it's a good idea, I thought it was great that you did that. Um, but, you know, I, I just think, people need a chance to share, and I, and I, and calling Nick or calling Mike doesn't make sense. Let them come to a group where people can hear other people, hear, you know, hear what they have to say. Yeah, you're gonna get complaints, yours is gonna get complaints, obviously, you're gonna hear more negative than positive, that's the way our world is, has been that way since we were, since the world began, people will complain more than they will share positive things, that's okay, we can take it, that's what we're here for. And, uh, but we might learn some things, but it gives people a chance to share their frustrations, they may find out in, in that public meeting that, yeah, you know, you're right, that's the way it is. It's easiest way to communicate to people who have those concerns, so I think if we plan that, I think it'll be good, it'll be good for, for staff to- So I think if we plan that, I think it'll be good. It'll be good for, for staff to, to hear what people have to say. It'll be good for the people to hear what you have to say, and hear realistic, and hear the stories like you just shared. So I think that's the best, best way to communicate. But it, it's just one of those things, snow removal is one of those things that, you know, is highly charged, and it gets exacerbated by a big event, so.
As well as people that think they're doing, that, that are very pleased, and they get, they feel that the tax dollars that they're putting towards snow removal is well-spent, and it's being spent. We need to have both, not just people that have concerns, but also that people that just greatly appreciate the service that they receive for what they get. So if the council, it, let's have a, let's, was there a motion? Oh, go ahead. You wanna go? You want a chance to visit?
Yes. We don't have any action item on our agenda tonight, but what I'll do is, if we wanna have a public hearing, we'll have it in one of our next couple council meetings. If that's what I hear from all of you when we're, you can just email me. But what we need to do is give everybody time.
Right.
We wanna advertise it, if this is what you wanna do, so that everybody, that we can, we can have a turnout. But I think it's important that people were able to watch Nick and Troy's presentation tonight to see, okay, let, let me digest this, and then jot some questions down.
We didn't rush into this. This is, you know, we're.
Right. I'll, I'll get, I'll, I'll be in discussion with you over the next couple of weeks, and we'll, we certainly wanna hear from people. That's not our intent, our intent's to let people have this and resonate for a little while and think of their questions.
Okay. Anything else for Nick or Troy? Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Nick. Appreciate it.
Nine point one, public hearing, and at this time, a public hearing for the water service rates. And at this like time, I'd like to open the public hearing, and we'll start with Mike.
The Utilities Commission is recommending a three percent increase to our water rate and leaving all of our other rates as they were. I might let Paul explain. He's passed out a, a fact sheet for you. I think it's kind of a, an average water bill and what it means to the rates, and so go ahead, Paul.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Back in December 11th, we held our 2018 budget meeting. And included in that meeting, the council had approved the water utility budget along with the three percent increase. Because our rates are set by ordinance, this is kinda the final step to implement that rate increase. And so that's the reason for the public hearing tonight, is to amend our water rate ordinance to increase our rates for the three percent. Some of the costs kinda driving, you know, the increase for 2018, majority of it, we can contribute to chemical costs. And then also for replacing our filter media within our filters, our general, general, our granulated activated carbon. Some of that replacement cost is a little bit sooner than what we had expected. So that's kind of what's been driving the, the increase for 2018. And what we did is put together a sample bill of what an average residential customer could expect to see with the three percent increase, and it averages just about two, two dollars a month is what the average residential customer will see with the increase, or just under one percent of their total utility bill. So that, this rate would go into effect for the utility bills that go out in February. So their next statement would reflect the three percent increase on that utility bill. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have in regards to this.
Is there anyone out there that would like to address the council on the water rate increase? Council members? If not, is there, please, a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion offered by Hawkins and second by Peters. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. The next motion would be pleased to approve ordinance number 2018-01 as presented. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion offered by Peters.
Second.
And second by Hawkins. Is there any further discussion? Roll call vote, please, Patty.
Cypher's?
Yes.
Hesseck?
Yes.
Hawkins?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Ordinance passed. Nine point two, 2017 amended assessment hearing for Dale and Roxanne Wedle. And at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing, and we will begin with Mike.
Dale and Roxanne Wedle objected to their 2017 assessments prior to the October 9th assessment hearing. The Wedels and city staff has reached a mutual agreement upon the assessment amount. To proceed, the council's required to hold this public hearing. Following the hearing, this, um, council needs to act on the amended assessments. Basically, what we did is we negotiated their assessment rate from forty-four thousand and forty dollars to thirty-four thousand. And they'll also be able to apply, and it'll be later in the meeting, for a deferment because of undeveloped property.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council at this time during the public hearing? Hearing none. Is there, please, a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion offered by Cypher's and second by Peters. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. Next item would be to approve resolution 2018-04, adopting 2017 amended assessment for Dale and Roxanne Wedle.
So moved.
Motion offered by Peters.
Second.
Second by Hawkins. Is there any further discussion on the resolution?
Yeah, just a quick question.
Sure.
Yeah, I have no problem with this. What, how do you, I'm just a general question, since I'm newly new. How do you go about or deciding whether that's justified or not? Is there factors you take into consideration?
Troy and I and, and the Wedels and, and their attorney sat down, and we, we talked about land values, percent of land value, what was the assessment, percent of their land value? You know, what other assessments were on properties?
So you kinda do some, is this, is this really as justifiable as it sounded?
Right, and, and how do we, and how do we come? It would cost us all a lot more money to go to district court, and it's always better when you can sit down and agree to, and we.
So it's just basically you take other data from around town and, and, okay, yeah, I don't, I consider it a problem. I was just curious on what it is that you actually did to do that, so. And anybody, anybody has a right to do that, right?
Correct, correct.
Good, all right.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please, Patty.
Peters?
Yes.
Cypher's?
Yes.
Hesseck?
Yes.
Hawkins?
Yes.
Resolution passed. Next item, nine point three, 2017 amended assessment hearing for Kruger Realty.
Kruger Realty.
I better open the public hearing. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing, and we'll start with Mike.
Kruger Realty also objected to their assessments prior to the October 9th assessment hearing. We recently met with the folks from Kruger Realty, and we have reached an agreement, basically. What we said was residential apartments are residential in nature, but they're treated like commercial properties for tax purposes, so that's how we levied our assessments. They didn't, apartments generally don't receive the two-thirds credit a regular residential property does. We decided it is residential, and so to your, to your question last time, we decided that they would agree to pay the two-thirds on their property. So it basically, it lowered their assessment from thirteen thousand, two hundred and ninety-fourty-eight to eighty-eight hundred and sixty dollars.
Is there anyone here that would like to address the council during this public hearing? If not, is there a motion, please, to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion offered by Hawkins.
Second.
Second by Hesseck. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. We'll now move on to adopt resolution 2018-05, adopting the 2017 amended assessment for Kruger Realty as presented. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion offered by Peters.
Second.
Second by Cypher's. Is there any further discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please, Patty.
Cypher's?
Yes.
Hesseck?
Yes.
Hawkins?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Resolution passed. Eleven point one, December, excuse, December 31st, 2017 investment report, and Paul.
Yes, included in the agenda packet is our investment schedule, showing the investments that the city held as of December 31st, 2017. Next to the letter, next to the investment in the investment schedule is the autoizing policy within the city's investment policy, and the total interest that we had earned in, in 2017 was just over thirty, three hundred and thirty-eight thousand. That's up about fifty thousand from 2016 of two hundred and eighty-seven thousand. So we are seeing a little increase in interest rates, still relatively low, and, but, but they are improving. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have on our investment report.
Any questions for Paul?
Looks like it, looks like our investment, or the investment, total investment increased by a million and a half if I read that right, over previous year.
Uh, that's, yes, that sounds about right, yep.
Okay.
The overall, but, yes, the, the balance in our investments, yes.
Any other questions for Paul? Thank you. Fifteen point one, amended assessment deferral, and Mike.
Dale and Doc, Roxanne Wedle have applied for a deferral of their 2017 assessments as their property is not developed, and that's one of the three reasons for a deferral. Staff is recommending approval, and we have that resolution 2018-6 ready for action.
Is there a motion, please, to approve resolution 20, 2018-06, approving the application and agreement for a special assessment deferral for Dale and Roxanne Wedle?
So moved.
Motion offered by Hawkins?
Second.
Second by Cypher's? Is there any further discussion? Roll call vote, please, Patty.
Cypher's?
Yes.
Hesseck?
Yes.
Hawkins?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Resolution has passed. Fifteen point two, Para police officer declaration, and Mike.
We have a, we have to declare that police officers' eligibility for the police and fire plan. We have one police officer who is a licensed Minnesota peace, peace officer, but he serves as our animal control code enforcement officer. He's been on the coordinated plan with all other city employees for some time, and we really believe that he should be part of the police and fire plan. So we've adjusted his job description in our talking to Para about the, the number of, how much time he spends doing police work and, and enforcing state law and that sort of thing. And this is part of our effort to do that with this resolution. That'll help support our, our claim to the police and fire fund that they should accept, destined into that Para plan.
Is there a motion, please, to approve resolution 2018-07, declaring that Dustin Schwepke meets all of the police and fire plan membership requirements?
So moved.
Second.
Motion offered by Peters and second by Hawkins. Is there any further discussion? Roll call vote, please, Patty.
Hesseck?
Yes.
Hawkins?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Cypher's?
Yes. Resolution has passed.
Fifteen point three, call for a public hearing and proposed amendments for chapter 26 zoning of the Fairmont City Code, and Mike.
This is where we're starting the year off, kinda updating some of our city codes that have went inconsistent with, with what we've done in 96. We changed our city code, creating the community development division. Most, all of the ordinance changes you, you see here, where we're gonna call for a public hearing at our next council meeting, deal with how we, how folks would apply to the city to have a rezoning or a, a application before the Board of Zoning Appeal for a variance that would, it basically strikes the city engineer and adds community development director, so it's consistent with the action taken in 96. So each one of those ordinance are spots in our city code where that name had to be changed. And tonight, I'm just asking that you set the public hearing for the next council meeting, which will be February 12th, 2018, at 5:30.
Is there a motion, please, to approve, to schedule a public hearing for proposed ordinances, 2018-02, 03, 04, 05, 06, 07, 08, 09, 10, on February 12th, 2018, 5:30 PM, here in the City Hall Councilroom?
So moved.
Thank you very much. Motion offered by Peters, second by Hawkins. Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. Sixteen point one, accounts payable, Paul.
Yes, the bills for January are included in the packet. We're just asking for approval. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Paul? Hearing none. Is there, please, a motion to approve the payment of the January 2018 bills?
So moved.
Motion offered by Hesseck.
Second.
Second by Hawkins. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. Next one is seventeen. Do you have anything that you'd like to say under seventeen? Anybody else have anything they'd like to say under number seventeen, council members?
You know, I know we've been here long enough, but Tom and I are on, the Councilor Hawkins and I are on the, the feet aboard Fairmont Economic Development. We've been asked to just give you a little update on our 2018 through 2021 strategic plan. I'll just whip through it quick.
Thanks for thinking of that.
We have six major components. Retention, expansion, and what we are, what we are, are, the strategic plan says we will be providing necessary human and financial resources to be successful in retaining and expanding our local businesses and industries of all sizes. Financing, component number two, develop the best possible toolbox of financial tools available for growing area businesses of all types. Component three, workforce development, develop, retain, attract talent to Fairmont area and to sustain and grow Fairmont area businesses. Component four, recruitment, continue to work toward attracting business and people to Fairmont. Component five is site development, have property available for businesses to easily access, excuse me, easily access for future growth and development. And housing, ensure Fairmont has a good inventory of safe, decent quality housing for all income levels to attract people to Fairmont and retain those residents we have.
Thank you. The Board is doing an amazing job with the group of people.
You know, I, I don't know. It's been a while since Lindsay's given a report, I think, but there's been a lot going on.
There has been.
She is doing a bang-up job, in my humble opinion.
Yes. People that say there's nothing going on in our town, she does need to come and give a presentation.
Aren't paying attention.
Yep, absolutely. Councilor Cypher's?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. I just wanna say thanks to the city. Attended the League of Minnesota's 2018 Leadership Conference with Councilor Hawkins last weekend. It dealt with community engagement, proactive media relations and collaboration. We, and it was fun to catch up with the relationships that we've gained with other communities, learning about how they deal with different situations. So thank you to the city for that. I also had, since the last meeting, had an airport advisory council meeting, and the, the big thing out there is we're working on a new airport hangar. Would like to thank Dennis Turner for his eight plus years of, that he served on the airport board, and most recently as chair. I also attended the Trail Committee, and that committee is so exciting. I mean, it's just fun to have those people around the table. And I just wanna say, anybody out there that would like to get involved with the Trails Committee, we would love to have you. So just get ahold of any of us, and we can let you know when we meet. And it's a real fun committee, and a lot of exciting things are happening.
Thank you. Anybody?
There's a couple of things I wanna thank Bruce for remembering to bring that up from the feed, I, because I'd forgotten about it. That's, uh, thanks for doing that. And just to reiterate about the leadership conference that we attended this last week, it was very good. And they spent some time talking on crisis stuff, and the two things that I pulled out the most was, was, one of the things was, when you're, you know, when you're talking crisis, I'm not, you know, it doesn't necessarily have to be heavy duty crisis. It could be like the officer-involved shooting, but it might be just something to do with, you know, a concern that happened in town, might be the snowplow thing, whatever. But, but it was interesting when you hear from people, and I learned something about, there's, there's a complaint, and then there's a position, or I forget the words exactly, but it's, it's learning, there's usually an underlying, an underlying reason of why somebody has a complaint about this, but there's usually an underlying point, and it's something I didn't think about, so it's that I learned from that. The other thing that they talked about in their crisis plan, most communities, and I don't know if Fairmont does or not, but most communities have a crisis operational plan, you know, that they have a plan in place how to deal with a crisis. But most communities typically don't have a crisis communication plan. You know, who's involved, it's very detailed. There's a committee, it usually involves the mayor, as well as city staff. Who's gonna say what? Who's gonna be the spokesman for the city? I don't know if we have a detailed communication plan or not. Doesn't... not, doesn't matter, but it's just something I thought was interesting that I never picked up because they said a lot of communities don't and have, you know, they have the operational part, but they don't have the communication plan. So you know what, who to reach or who, you know, if, if a crisis happens, who calls first, who's going to speak for the city, that kind of thing. So if we don't, you know, it's something to look into. Maybe we do already, I don't know. But I just, it was something that I thought was interesting, that a lot of communities don't have that. So, but anyway, thanks for letting us go there. And it was, again, networking is always fun to run some of the same people. The mayor, mayor from Worthington was there and had a chance to talk to him when we met him last year. And so it was, it was good information in those, those conferences, so.
Good. Thanks for attending. I'll just bring up the rear. And do you have anything that you'd like to bring up? Shortly after the first of the year, I approached Mike about the possibility of having community listening meetings throughout our town. And I wanted to be able to leave City Hall and go out throughout our community and each one of our four wards. And I would, I went, I preferred it to be on a Saturday because I know there are people that work Saturdays, but it seemed to me that to be a time that we could maybe get more people there. And I wanted for city staff to be, senior staff to be there because I wanted it to be an opportunity for me and/or council members to come and just listen. We don't do any talking. We just do the, we listen. And so, Mike and I brainstormed about the possibility. He, right away, told me that he thought that we needed, that he approved of this and we needed to do this. And so, Mike and I brainstormed and we've come up with four different meeting times throughout 2018, that we will go to each one of the four wards in town. And a senior staff, I mean, excuse me, a city staff member will give a very small presentation on a certain subject. And then after that, it is just going to be time for open discussion. And there won't be any mics or intimidate, some intimidating things for some people. And it's just going to be a chance to listen for us and for questions to be answered. And so, our first one is going to be on March seventeenth, and that is a Saturday. And it's going to be, we're going to concentrate on Ward Four, and it's going to be at the Knights of Columbus at, from ten in the morning until eleven in the morning. And Megan is going to be the city staff person that's going to give a small presentation. And Megan is our plan, planner code enforcement technician. And so she will just talk, I'll give a brief presentation on how the city handles code violations. Each one of the meetings are going to be posted so that if every council person wants to come, we are not in violation of the open meeting law. And it's just a warm extent invitation to each council person to please. If you'd like to attend, please do. And we are going to, the way we're going to let the community know about these meetings is we're going to use the City of Fairmont's Facebook page and the City, the City of Fairmont's website. We're going to run an ads in the Sentinel and in the photo press. And then we're going to send out postcards to addresses throughout the community, just to give people a heads up on when it's going to happen. And again, it's just a listening time and a time for the community to share thoughts that they have, what they like about the town, their concerns about the town, a subject they want to know more about. And so, look for, please look for more information on that. And again, the first one will be on March seventeenth at the Knights of Columbus. And Megan will be the presenter. And Mike will attend each one of the meetings as well as, as senior staff.
How about utility bill also?
Well, we talked about that. And Mike, would you like to give?
No, that's fine.
I mean, but that was, that was a top, topic that came up was.
I, I think what we've talked to the utility folks about is, you know, we have more and more people on ACH and.
Oh, gotcha.
Just electronic, fewer and fewer people are getting paper bills. So, it's not as effective as it once was for its cost.
Gotcha.
What time is that, Deb?
Ten, from ten to eleven. And hopefully, there'll be more, there'll be more, there will be more information coming out so that we can get the word out there. And it's, being it's in Ward Four, it's not just for Ward Four people. It's for anybody in the community. But I wanted to have different pla, a different place in each one of the four wards for each of the four meetings. And so, I look forward to seeing you there and members of the community, for all of us to learn and to listen. So, that's what I got. Does anybody have anything else that they'd like to share at this time?
I bet I do. I move to adjourn.
There's a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Cypher's. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried, and the meeting is adjourned.
Thanks, everyone.